Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Session, August 24th, 2022. First on the agenda is proposed changes to the jail food system. Hey Lori, come on up.
Good everyone.
Morning. Mike, Mike, you got to turn your mic on.
So, a month ago, we had owners of the Cellmate Company here to give their presentation on what we're gonna propose or what they proposed to me and now I'm gonna share with you what my thoughts on it and first of all, Cellmate is a fairly new company. I would, we would be the first jail facility in the state of Michigan to take them on. Other software product will model our sheriff's office. It'll communicate with our, my staff, medical staff, kitchen staff, and also just recently, they've partnered up with our commissary or current commissary staff or company. Couple of the, you guys wanna go to page five? You don't need to go through all of the pros here, but I'm just gonna hit on a couple and I know there's a couple that are not on that page five there for you, but big thing is the quality of the food. Our current vendor has diminished with quality of food. And there's no upfront fees to change with this company. It's a $10,000 one-time fee, but that will be made up through buy-ups through the, through the kitchen. So, anyone that wants to order more food or extra meal through the kitchen, that will go towards that $10,000. And once that $10,000 is paid, which we're looking at about six months for it to be paid off, the county will receive 37% commission. So, the jail will receive 37% commission from the buy-ups or anything else that we sell out of the kitchen. Currently, I'm selling Pepsi or Diet Pepsi, Pepsi Mountain Dew, coffee, pizza once a week. Occasionally, I'll sell Subway. And that's, everything we do with that can be tracked through the kitchen. Our commissary right now that we sell on site is not tracked, so that's another benefit for us. We might get two boxes of commissary in and I, there's no way of keeping track of what's being sold and what isn't other than at the end of the day right now. It meets MDOC regulations. When they built the program, they actually contacted Michigan Department of Corrections, which is a huge thing for me as an, as the administrator because I do have inspections once a year with MDOC and they do go through my kitchen. So, having them work hand-in-hand with MDOC is very helpful for myself or anyone else that once I retire, when they take over. It's easy to track with MDOC, also with our federal inmates. They'll communicate with federal standards as well. I do have kitchen trustees, kitchen inmate workers. Once they're in the kitchen, they can get a certificate for serve safe, which that can follow them when they are released from jail and that can help them possibly find a position, a job in the outside world, which hopefully then would keep them out of jail for future. Yes, yes. And a lot of our kitchen workers that we have right now, they do have experience of working in a kitchen at a local restaurant or local bar, but they don't have the serve safe. It's something they can take back to their former employee if that's where they go. This company allows not only the inmates to order extra food, but their loved ones on the outside. They can jump on and order anything that they want to for their loved one in jail. So, then the money is being spent on what they want it to be spent on and not what the inmate wants to spend it on. Staffing. This is another big one for me. Our current vendor right now, our kitchen manager and part-time employee in the kitchen is employed by our current vendor, which means sometimes we get people from not in this area that come to work for us. They don't know the area, they don't know the sheriff's office. I feel if we can bring it back to the sheriff's office and the county to run, we can get quality people from our community that wanna stay here and wanna work for us. It's been a little bit of a rodeo for me the last probably eight months, at least eight months, with our current vendor with keeping a kitchen manager. Like I said, they're not from the area, so they have no investment here. And if they can get in with the company closer to home, they choose to do so. I went through a couple kitchen managers and a little bit of rough times there for a few months. So, if we can bring it back to our, our people of our community and have them stay, I do have some numbers figured out. You'll see on page, I believe, 13 of the handout I gave you. Actually, it's page 14, I'm sorry. Halfway, halfway down, you'll see in the right column, the cost average is $1.40 to $1.65 per meal. That is not including our kitchen staff. So, with help from Jody, I figured what, what it would cost to have a full-time cook and a part-time cook and pay for our food. I did it on two different numbers. I did a high end and a low end. And with our inmate population at 63 inmates, that's our average right now. The low end, it would cost us approximately 96,000, well, close to 97,000 a year. And on the high end, it would be 114,000 a year. That's, I'm sorry, that's just for employee. Let me go to the
Average cost is like breakfast, lunch?
That is three meals a day. So, this, when I did this, it's kinda crazy when you think about it. You think of three meals a day, right? Well, you take 63 inmates, times three meals a day, and you're looking at what are you looking at?
189 meals a day.
Which, you're looking at a $500 a day meal cost for that many, that many inmates. Currently, we're paying approximately $466 a day for 63 inmates. Our current vendor is trying to raise their prices, which it would be 520 a day. With the new vendor, at the low end, at $1.40 a meal, it is 264 a day, that is not including my cook. And at the high end, at $1.65, that's 311 a day. And with all that being added together on the high end with the new company, I'm looking at about $187,000. At the low end, 170,000. And I would rather shoot high than low just because of the way prices of everything went up. We are currently budgeted, or we're currently spending $170,000 a year for our current vendor, and that's cook and all. So, low end with this new company is pretty comparable with a cook, with two cooks.
With a more stable program.
Yes, and people that wanna be here, wanna be here and
To speak, improve food.
What, another thing that I really like about this company, they will work hand-in-hand with us. I trust them. I've known both of them, well, Robin and, and Rich that were here a month ago. I've known them for quite a few years and in that packet, you'll see references from other sheriff's offices, not just throughout the state, but other, other states. Menting what an awesome job they've done over the years. And I believe even the one sheriff states that he would change over immediately, but due to contract issues, he can't change right now. He has to wait till his contract is up. I like the idea of them being hands-on with me in there if I have any issues. It was brought up about, first, we had COVID in the jail a couple weeks ago, where I had to pull all my kitchen workers out, my inmate workers out of the kitchen. So, the cook was in there by herself. With this company, I would have a two-week supply on hand of frozen cooked meals where we could just throw them in the oven and they would be ready, ready to go within five minutes after cooking in the oven for any emergency situation where we don't have the staff to be in the, in the kitchen. Say, both my cooks were sick and is it putting more on my officers if something like that were to happen? Yes. But we didn't plan on having what we went through with COVID in our current vendor either. So, a lot has been put back on my officers because of that.
You have the storage facility for all these frozen dinners?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And
And that was another thing that was brought up. It's, we would put there would be a week on hand in actually the facility and then the company would make sure we had the next week there for us.
I don't know if you got to it yet, or when, if you go with this company, do you plan on putting it?
That was my next thing.
Okay.
Actually, I would like to do as quick as October 1st. That gives me enough time to, my current vendor already knows that I'm looking elsewhere.
No, that's Chartwell.
No. Actually, it's Canteen Tigs.
Do we have Chartwell?
No, I've never had Chartwell. They are aware that we have no intention on resigning contract with them. And my biggest thing is the quality of the food and the staffing that we've received over the last ten months, eight months.
And I'm reading between the lines, the support that they can give you as an administrator, jail administrator, correct?
Yes.
Which you haven't had in the past.
No.
What you're hearing very, being very nice, being very nice about, or political or whatever you wanna call it, but
And right now, what we have with the special diets, it's, it's kind of a big circle what we got going on right now between my stat, or the corrections officers, the kitchen, and the inmate and medical staff. So, right now, it's a sheet of paper. If you come into jail and you're, say you're allergic to beans, it's up to my officer, print that off, to get it to medical staff, to get it to kitchen staff to make sure that inmate doesn't have beans on his tray. This is all, everything is, will be programmed in with our current program. But once someone comes in and says, "I'm allergic to beans," the kitchen, medical, officers, everyone is notified immediately. So, there's no mistakes on any special trays, any diet trays. Any allergic, we don't need any allergic reactions. In the jail, we went through that before as well, so.
Hey. Lieutenant Temple, Teepol, would you come up, please? Just because you're here, how's that? No, I just Lori's made, made a great presentation and just, but you're part of that team over there.
Oh, yeah.
And so, I want, you know, I wanted, and you've been here, you've got some experience under your belt, if I can say so. And just give your take on what you're, what you've seen looking at it. I know you've looked at it.
Yeah, I agree with what Lieutenant Beck says is having the support from the company is ideal. Rich comes from Midland County where he was a captain, where he knows the system, knows the jail. He worked the jail, actually worked into the kitchen, so he knows the assets of having good customer service and being supportive of the admin staff, cuz I've been here with Lori, she's put her time into the kitchen and with their employees and having this struggle of making sure a manager shows up or a kitchen employee shows up puts, puts a lot of burden on her and the staff. And I agree with the transition to Cellmate cuz in the past couple years, what Canteen Tigs has promised Lori has not come to fruition at times. I understand in the last couple of years, it's been tough with COVID and stuff, but they should still remember the smaller jail and not forget us and just stick with the larger jails and stuff like that. Because I feel that that was a little bit, it was left out with Lori. And not having that, not that, yeah, not having that communication with them and being left out where they take our kitchen manager and move them up to Traverse City for a week. And we get a part-time that's just not really knowing what's going on, but she's just there as a fill-in. And not having that communication to Lori is, is we're taking your kitchen manager and moving her up there until the day of or even the day before, I think, that one time.
Recently, just back in July, we had an incident, actually June, where I didn't have a cook. The company didn't come through with a cook. It was a Saturday and it was a, it was a busy weekend. I mean, weekends in Roscommon County are busy, which means the jail is busy. And we didn't have a cook. Friday night, I was struggling with contacting the company to find out, what are you gonna do about getting me a cook? It ended up being, it had pizzas delivered for dinner that night. My officers had to deal with getting cereal ready for the inmates in the morning. And it was, I don't know. You guys have seen my trays over there, so they come out, they're all organized. Well, when you have 20 pizzas delivered to the jail, it's actually my officers that are taking the pieces of pizza out of the box to give to the inmate. So, there's been some struggles with my current vendor right now and it's not getting better, any better.
The last part of it is the employees. I mean, we're just coming in, in the sheriff's office. We love to bring in people within the community who work for us. I grew up in Holm Lake, I grew up here. Sheriff Stevenson grew up here, you know, it's like, we want community involvement. We want those employees to come to Sheriff's Department, stay at the Sheriff's Department and retire. And I think bringing in our own employees, we're not only helping out the community with bringing in those people, but we're actually helping their families, then getting the word out off the Sheriff's Department and the jail and getting that positive output and outspoken out to the community. So, they know this is how it's ran, this is how it's done. And I think that helps out immensely having the employees come and actually have some investment in the community and the county as well. So, I mean, boy, it's a good thing.
Okay. Mr. Melburn, you got anything?
Yes, we do. No, that'll be the same, it'll, just like what we're doing right now with Canteen. No, because the juvenile that's billed separately, I don't ever receive a bill from Canteen for the juvenile center. So, that, I think their average over there right now is probably
Their meal, their meals would come out of their account.
Correct. But still prepare their meals and, and meet their standards.
Mic's not on.
I think it's positive and I'm glad you're moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mel, Mr. Melburn.
You've earned my support.
Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it sounds like it's gonna be a good deal. And I'm sure those, Robin and the other person, I'm sure that Dave will be around. You know, or just give him a call, they will be, it sounds like, it sounds like they're, they're, it sounds like they're dedicated to this program, so that's a good thing.
That they are, and I, I'm in contact with Rich and Robin at least once a week since we've started this. They're very supportive and I, like I said before, I trust them.
Yeah, I have the utmost respect for Rich cuz when I took over for Lieutenant Lemire, when I became jail administrator, he was one of my mentors I, I looked to to get information between him and Gordy out of Gladwin County. They, they helped me earn a lot during that short time. Actually, they pushed that on to Lori too, so, yeah, so
They've been tremendous.
Tremendous help, doesn't even, not just in the food industry, but actually in the jail setting as a lieutenant. They helped me immensely come up to the, to the ratings there.
Okay, well, there's a copy of their food service management contract that they'll be looking for us to sign this if we so desire to go on, onto this. So, we'll read, I would encourage everybody to read that contract over. Barring the return of Jody from vacation, we will see about putting this on for next, next meeting in September with an October 1st date on it to see if we can get this implemented. I think we probably should address it the first meeting in September rather than the second.
Thank you.
So, we'll take a look at that. Hopefully, it sounds like it's gonna make everybody's life a lot easier. Not only Lori's job as administrator, but you know, your corrections officers cuz they're ultimately the ones that are getting the food to these people into it that they get, cuz they, they gotta hand it to, so. Hey, we'll go from there, okay?
Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you, appreciate that. Hey, I'm gonna deviate a little bit, I'm gonna bring Noel up because I'd ask her to stop in real quick in regards to the, let me get my thing here so I know what I'm talking about. Motion number, motion number three, I just wanted to have some discussion on it. As all, all the commissioners understand, this was brought to us at the last meeting as a presentation for the voluntary early retirement incentive program as outlined. Did everybody get the financials on that? I did.
I had a good discussion. I feel we had a good discussion a couple of weeks ago on this in the past. I'm very comfortable with this. That's my opinion.
Okay. Okay. It's a, you know what? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood it because it is kind of a, it is kind of a big deal, but it also, I think it, it helps the county in the long run. There is quite a savings that will be, will be saved over 30 years. That averages out about $49,000 a year. Like anything else, you're not gonna see that right away. But you will see it after, the way I look at it, you will start seeing it after three to four or five years.
Absolutely, and I really think that we'll start to see the difference in our valuation and what we're supposed to pay every single month from ours, you know, when they look at all of our actuarial information, you know, and our monthly payments that they may have us make to fund everything. I think it's eventually, we'll see it even in there too, but that's something that is, you can't calculate what that will be, you know, in the future. That's just my, my opinion cuz I, when I, I've watched how the totals have gone up over the years and, you know, and what has happened and oh, that, that's a, that's what I believe will happen. We'll also see it there too.
Okay, and I think the eligibility has pretty much covered everybody. All right. Can I have anything to add on that? Melburn?
Good, sir. Thank you, Noel, for being here today.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, looks good to me. I don't have a problem with it.
All right. Thank you for coming. All right. Item number two, Headley Restorations Millage Further Discussion. Did everybody receive, I know they did this, Roscommon County General Operating Millage Restoration, that about a four-page thing from Jody talking about what we can do with this. Jody and I have had some discussion on it. She did put in the budget information that went out this past week that we'll be having a meeting with the, with employees or department heads, anybody that so desires and has some ideas to help us to pass this millage thing. One of the things I've been tossing around is, is that I think we probably need to go around the counties and have some strategic public, public meetings. Like in my particular area I was looking at, I wanted to discuss it first is, is to have a meeting at Richfield Township. And then have two commissioners show up at that. In other words, that's my district, so it should be myself and
I would volunteer and I would like to see one at Richfield, Garrish and Denton. And I was hoping we can knock all three of them out in one week. And I would go to all three. And I would like, you know, get with the undersheriff or the sheriff to see if they're available to
That's what I, my, that was my next thing, is my next thing is, is that Vance is, I'm not talking for Vance cuz I already talked to Vance, but Vance has offered as 911 to, to come in and
And I would jump aboard to
And explain, and explain even though that 911 has a separate millage, what county still does to help 911 out. So, and, and then the other thing, and I'm, and she's here and I have not discussed it whether it is, is having either sheriff or undersheriff or Lieutenant Teepol or Lieutenant Beck come in, explain the jail, because I'll use Richfield for an example. They may have a police department over there, but they bring, they bring the prisoners to our jail. So, there is, there is a cost savings to Richfield Township in this thing. Because once Richfield arrests that person, brings it over to the jail, it's on us. Am I correct? We don't get any money from Richfield Township.
What I need to know is, now, head it up, when does Richfield meet with the regular meeting? I don't wanna do that in their regular meeting.
Third Tuesday of every month.
Okay, and how about
We need to look
Township, when do they meet, Tim?
Be the first Wednesday.
Yes, first Wednesday at seven.
And does anybody know when Garrish meets?
Second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday. So, if we could do, I was thinking like the 13th, 14th and 15th, we could do Richfield on the 13th, Garrish on the 14th and Denton on the 15th. Because it won't interfere with the meetings, but I have to get with the townships to see if we could use their halls.
Right, I'd have to get with, I, I could get with Richfield if we're gonna, if we're gonna be
And that would be, is the week after we have, will be a port year on for association.
Right, and if I'm not mistaken, the other thing to consider is, is absentee ballots go out by September. Amy, do you know that off the top of your head? And somebody's thought, I'm thinking the 24th, but that's a Saturday, so I'm
But if we did like the 13th, 14th, 15th, we could do our presentations in the Yes, like seven o'clock in the evening. And I would check with Garrish and Denton to see if we could use their halls if you wanted to do Richfield.
Yeah, I could take, I could, if that's, if that's the schedule we agree to.
Yeah.
And then I was, you know, anyone else that would be a positive to us, you know, I mean, I don't it'd be nice if four, five, six of us. I guess that's my next question. It is a public meeting.
Yeah.
So, can five of us show up as commissioners?
Yeah, because it is a public meeting.
It is a published, public meeting, which we'd have to get with the newspaper to announce that.
And that gives us plenty of time, but it's before the absentees go out. The week after, you know, we're gonna be gone. And even if all five commissioners can't be there, if we could be on board with the 911, the sheriff, the county clerk or the treasurer, we can invite them to come to the meetings.
Right.
Maintenance. Okay, would you do them three days, I know it's three nights in a row. Can we attendantly say the 13th, 14th and 15th right now?
At far as I'm concerned, I think, I personally, I think that's a goal to go up there cuz we're gonna, number one, we gotta get permission to do this.
Yeah, and I can make some phone calls, but I need input from you guys if that's okay.
When you wanna do a Roscommon Township?
But that'll be on something different, Mark. This'll be just these three townships right there.
So, in other words, you'd have the one in, in Denton, which would so to speak cover Lake, Roscommon.
And Markey.
And Markey.
Well, Markey could even go to Garrish. You know, and if somebody's interested, you know, even though they live in Denton, they might be busy that night. They could go to Richfield or Garrish.
Right, right.
Cuz we're giving three dates out.
We don't have to go to each township, obviously.
No, no, I don't think we do either.
General area is what's important.
And then townships, they have And then townships, they have big halls where they could hold the people.
Right. Okay. We're towards that.
Yeah, I just need permission from the board to put these dates together.
Anybody on board with that totally? Okay.
Do you have anything to add? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
If you want to get with the sheriff's department.
I can.
See if they're available or Richfield Township.
Well, first off, I'll get with Richfield to find out if we can do this.
Yeah. And then give them a heads up if we can.
You and I, you, you find out from the other two and you and I'll coordinate this whole thing. All right?
The big thing that I would ask Mr. Chairman is for transparency issues, we always began it, we want to find the papers so the papers actually put an article in the paper.
Yeah.
We just want to put a, a, a notice on the, the front of the door.
Your mic on.
As far as I know, it says green.
All right. I know they can, I know they can hear you out there. It's pretty far away. Okay, go ahead.
We want to make sure that we put it out there. So we, we reach the most people, the most effective and efficient way.
Right.
And then we could even put it online or Roscommon Facebook page and let the other townships know, even though we're not meeting at their townships. We could let them know what our schedule is at all the townships so they could even attend.
In other words, it'd be, we'll announce that there's three public meetings for countywide restoration.
Yes.
Have be held at these three sites.
Yeah.
At such, at such a time, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
And then you could be, you could take the lead as far as talking at these meetings along with other ones.
Yeah.
You know, and we could bring Bill in and.
All right.
Here again, after football practice and I got you.
Hey Ken.
Do we have a portable camera? Do we have the capability to do it via Zoom from another location?
The, the, the other townships, I'm sure they have the, the, that capability.
Yeah, that would be a good thought, Ken.
I think it'd be a good idea to be, you know, zoom it, if at all possible, zoom it from.
That'd be up to those townships. If they have the capability. I know at one time you have to rent it or, or whatever. I don't know if the, I don't, since COVID. Since COVID is kind of one to what it is, I don't know if they kept their contracts up or not. I don't know if Richfield's still doing Zoom meetings or not under meetings.
But that's something we can look into.
Yeah, we can look into that, yeah. But we don't have a capability of a camera that we can walk around with, so. Right? Anything else? All right. Julie, what else did you have?
Thank you, Bob.
Whoops, watch out.
And then she wants to do her report on the Oasis of Hope. He just sent us.
Well, we got time, so Joe Jean, you out there?
Hey, good morning. Thank you.
Hey, good morning. Boy, talk about getting in under the wire. You're right here.
Hey, we do, we.
We, we, we can grant, we can grant your request. If you want to give us a report, that'd be great. We got, we just finished up with what we had going, so we'll let you go on. We got some time now until uh. I guess we'll give you about ten minutes if you want.
Oh, very generous. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Um, I'm here today um, to represent the award that was granted the Oasis of Hope. And I'm, I gotta turn my, the reverb down here. All right, so the Oasis of Hope House was able to get started because of the American Recovery Plan Act. Um, that was granted to the county in foresight and awarding that for our um, beginning. Not only were they able to give us about fifty seven thousand for security. That is also helping us with cameras and employing people. To date, we have employed uh, five people. Two of them are security during the night. And three of them are doing management, case management and security during the day. Um, also to date, we have placed sixteen families since we opened in January in two stable housing. And we really want to celebrate that. Within the next. Uh, sixty days, we will probably have another ten people that are placed, not only in this county, but in surrounding counties. So we are able to serve a variety of people. Um, and these folks are, um, have applied because they're in between houses. Their house has been um, shut down. Landlords are no longer renting. Um, the rental markets are narrowing. And so it is very challenging to help folks do some of these segues. Um, and just to give you um. A, a brief glimpse of some of our guests that we have at Oasis House. There was a young man that was taking care of his mother until she passed away. And at that point, the house was sold and he had no place to go. He had dedicated um, the last seven or eight years. To taking care of his mom rather than forwarding his own interests. And um, he's now happily employed in a very good job, probably even better than mine. And um, even with some of his challenges, um, ac- academic challenges, he's doing very well and he's renting his own home. Um, we've had um. Uh, two particular ones that come to mind are ladies that were living with relatives that, that passed away. Both were disabled women. It would fit very well into the grandmother image and they are now happily um, in apartments. And on correct floors that help them with their disability and, and it's been some great teamwork between United Way, Michigan Works, uh, DHHS. Um, Habitat for Humanity even. Uh, there's, you know, uh, St. Vincent's and Salvation Army especially. So this teamwork um, between the county and all these players at the table have allowed this to happen. It's made our community. Uh, just that much stronger. And um, regularly I hear from um, DHS and like this, this is the best thing that's ever happened in our community for our clients. We do um, remote case management, so people do not have to be without housing uh, to receive case management. Our um. We're just very grateful to be able to work with our community and make it stronger. So um, again, we appreciate our partnerships and um, are looking forward to the stability that this grant has offered us. And getting started, we work through NEMSCA, through the um, the HARA. Um, so we are receiving federal funds um, in order to keep this um, project going. So as the executive director of Oasis of Hope House, I just want to thank you as a, as the county and being generous and, and helping us. We are um, in the midst of um. We're currently, we're functioning under the umbrella of the Free Methodist Church of Michigan. And we are going to branch off into our own five oh one C three. So with that added stability, we are um, able to um, continue to look forward to making Oasis of Hope House much more stable in the future as well. Part of that is married to the next um, request that I'm gonna kind of mutate into here. It, when you, we're working under the umbrella of the church, we're not able to own property. Because it would become an asset uh, to the, the state um, denomination. And so this is another reason why we are, we're our own five oh one C three. And, and with that um, property ownership, we are also looking towards the opioid um, settlement funds. That were granted to our community and helping with the prevention and harm reduction, uh, treatment, recovery services and, and other. Uh, substance use disorders that um, this type of funding would allow. We have um, property that we have looked at and in order for us to get started on ownership of property. Uh, we would have to sit down with the county and discuss um, an application for that grant and maybe other ways that we can work um, within the county. The partners that we have through the Drug Free Coalition currently, and I'm also the chair of the Drug Free Coalition of Roscommon County. Those partnerships include Mid Michigan and the Medical Assisted Treatment Center. Um, I work with Mid Michigan and My Michigan in Ogumaw County to um, expand the medical assisted treatment. Uh, for any kind of addictions, cocaine, meth, uh, fentanyl's, opioids of any kinds and stimulants. And as you guys well know that um, the, the drug temperature of the, of the nation right now is ramping up into those other categories. And the opioids are now being more controlled in their um, distribution. So the fake um, meds are out. The DEA is very aware and very um, alarmed at the fake stuff that's available on the street and puts, puts our people at risk for death. Um, our community even has seen very, quite a few um, accidental overdoses because of these doctored pills. What we want to do is prevention. Um, we want to prevent recidivism. We want to take care of folks, help them to find stable housing. Um, this is one step up um, from a temporary emergency housing. This is a mid-level um, housing where a person can also be encouraged. Um, and, and their life can be enriched through sobriety as well as working through the medical assisted treatment. Case management would include getting a job. Um, and stabilizing our homes. Some of these um, the families are in the um, the system where their children are at risk of, of harm and trauma. Through a drug influenced home. And we know that as a state, we are mandated to help reduce the amount of trauma. And so we're talking about reducing recidivism. Um, so this lightens the load in our jails and our county expenses. Increasing job retention because more people are showing up sober to work. Um, and very motivated to work and improve our community and our county's quality. So it's, it's in all of our interests to be part of this. And I reached out to um, Victoria who was also very interested in, and seeing. Um, the participation of the county and begin to talk about what we can do as a county. I do have a landlord that is interested. Um, actually is now landlord, he'd be a property owner. Um, who's interested in selling if we have um, the funding. So. Of not only purchasing the property, but having a program that is sustainable. Uh, so that we can walk away and we can see that um, this program is moving forward. There is a whole set of pockets that are available for program funding. So Catholic Human Services, Mid Michigan, My Michigan, regional hospitals, all working together to provide this. Um, there's a lot of um, second, secondary program. Um, participation um, in, in helping to provide for behavioral health as well as the substance use counseling. So that particular piece, uh, we have um, a big, it's a big project and would require lots of partners. And it's very complex. Um, but one of the first things that everybody starts with is we need a piece of property. So there is property available. Um, I'm here to tell you that and um, just need to know um, when the county is ready. And if they would like to use that opioid settlement funding for an opiate uh, response. Uh, for the community and, and perhaps even for the region. So um, in conclusion, I, I just want to express my um, pride in our community. Um, and the gratefulness that I am for the commissioners to move so quickly. In distributing the American Recovery Plan Act and allowing um, this money to stimulate the economy. As well as improve our community. Uh, there's other counties right now that I am very aware of that have done nothing with that money. Um, or have very short sightedly only given it into one of the many areas that um, we have done here in Roscommon County. So I'm very proud member of Roscommon County. Um, and I just want to thank the commissioners for their participation as well as their foresight. To allow this money to be released into the community and improve the lives of everybody um, in the community. So thank you for this time slot. I know it was spontaneous and I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, Joe Jean, I just wanted to um. I've been a commissioner for fifteen years and I, I want to, I want to thank you personally for your participation on that steering committee. That steering committee that we put together was probably the best committee that I've ever served on as far as people from the community. We had some. We had some people in from, on that committee from different areas of the county. I think we've represented the county very well. And I think I really got a lot out of the discussions we had because we didn't always agree on stuff. But everybody respectfully agreed at the end of the day and, and we got it done. So we had four point seven million dollars to uh, implement. Was interesting that, it's interesting that we got requests for seven point four. You turned that thing around. It was seven point four million dollars. So consequently, we couldn't do everything, but I think by moving as fast as we did was the best thing that we ever did as a county. So I thank you for your participation in that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Milburn.
Joe Jean, listen, thanks for being here today. And you know, I know you're a humble person, but because your outstanding leadership and superb perseverance, you brought this program to fruition. You know, it shows that one person can make a difference and obviously you, your staff and your partners that you've, you've worked with have made that difference. So thank you on behalf of the commissioners. And he just is a citizen of our county. I'd like to personally thank you for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You may have had short notice, but it worked out very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. On to, that's uh, that's all I've got for the work session at this point. So we can be back here at ten o'clock for a regular meeting.
Sounds good.
Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Meeting, August twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. Called the, meeting called to order at ten o'clock. Mr. Milburn, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands foundation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, roll call of board members. Amy, you're up.
Mokethollar?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Melvin?
Here.
Russo?
Okay, thank you. Item number four, approval of the agenda, please. Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Mokethollar?
Yes.
Mushkay?
Okay, item number five, public comment, agenda items only, five minutes. Any public comment? Sherry. Morning.
Um, we had a question at the. Um, thank you. At the work session last time about our program and I put these on your. Um, this is what we hand out to the public, share them. One side shows that we help with utilities. The other side shows that we help with foreclosure. This is an opportunity and a privilege to serve this community in this way. Um, this last year, United Way through emergency food and shelter funds that we have have put out forty six thousand dollars to uh, food pantries and shelters. And that includes River, um, a River House because. While they're not in a community, they do serve Roscommon County residents. We have also just handed out thirty five thousand dollars of donor funds to our agencies. There's ten of them that we shared with everything from. Michigan uh, Children's Assessment Center to uh, the food pantries and so forth in this community. We also have been able to do almost um, thirty families with tax foreclosure. At least that many with our housing program to help with utilities. And I hope you, that you'll help us get the word out, share this. If you want more of these, please uh, let us know. We'll hand them out. We have business cards. That's what, what we've been doing to let people know. And again, thank you for the opportunity to serve the community and to help people. Uh, there's a lot of need out there and uh, with the inflation and. people. There's a lot of need out there. And with the inflation and the problem with wages that we had, coming out of COVID and so forth, we, we see an increasing need for food, shelter. Housing is huge in this community. And so this is just one opportunity that allows us to work with a lot of the people in the community, the other agencies, and to help people who need it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any public, okay. Any other public comment out there handy from anyone in? Public comment going once, going twice, going three times. Okay. Item six, Administrator Controller. Obviously she is not here today, so we will move on to number seven, under correspondence, MSU Extension. Their August programs for 2022, consumer, item B is Consumers Energy and their hydro strategy, strategy future. Item C is Clinton County Resolution in regards to, I believe it was Zillow, if I remember reading it correctly. We've already acted on that ourselves. Lake Township had a resolution on there. What was that in regards to? Oh, they were requesting a public comment in regards to the lake assessment, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Item E is Association of County Veterans Operation Greenlight. F is Roscommon Township in regards to request for public hearings in regard to the lake level assessment district.
It's a coincidence. It's almost boilerplate the same as what the Lyon Township wants. Like, somebody had something there. Passed it on to somebody else.
Right. So, which, you've all got the copy of the schedule. That public hearing is scheduled for Friday, October 14th. There's been a timeline that was put forth by Stacy there from, from her, you know, what company does she represent yet, but she's doing a fine job. And she's been out to these townships and so forth. So that, I don't know why they don't know that we're going to have a public hearing.
In regard to them?
I have no idea why, since Stacy's been telling them we're going to have a public hearing, why they would have to think that we're not.
Should we publicly respond by the letter to the townships and let them, to transpire? Just lethal?
Would they say that on these?
Okay.
Yeah. So I, you know, as far, as far as I'm concerned, if it's Lake Township, David can give them the copy of this, this right here. And Mark, you can do the same thing for Roscommon County. We're right on schedule. This thing started on August 8th and it goes all the way till October 14th, where the public hearing is going to be scheduled. So you got a copy of it. So, you know.
I just want to make sure we publicly respond to the townships.
Okay. Well, like I say, those are in your districts. I would expect that that commissioner could take care of them. Yep. Then we'll take his copy in there and Ken can do the same with Garrish and Lyon. All right. But it has to do with, the town, or the lake assessment has to do with Lake, Roscommon, Benton, another one, Marky. Okay. Okay. Item G is Association County Legislative Update for the 12th of August. Eagle has got a withdrawal of, withdrawal of an application and something that they, they were contacted. I don't remember, it wasn't even in our county. Lyon Township has a, has a letter requesting a look at the ORV ordinance.
Every township can do what they please at this point.
The county ORV ordinance was put forth by the state, was okayed by the counties, which we were the second one. Ogumah did it first, we did it second. And in that ordinance, they can opt out if they so choose. But that is the choosing of their board. It's not up to the county to opt out for them. The only way we can opt out is we'd have to opt out the whole county. We can't do that. So you, you'll communicate to them then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I've had a couple of meetings with them.
All right. J is Van Vieren County with the auto insurance reform. So any questions on any correspondence from any commissioner at this point? Hearing or seeing none. On to animal control and animal control and animal shelter stats for the month of July. And MSU Extension Report to our partners, item B. Any questions in regards to that? Boy, we're moving right along today. Item nine, any visitors like to be recognized at this time? Ready? Nobody in Zoom land? All right. Item 10, under unfinished business and new business, Camp Grayling expansion, expansion. Has anybody had any more information on that? I've had none, been contacted by no one. Ken?
There was discussion about this. There was discussion about this at our recent LEPC meeting. And I think the basic understanding of most of the people there was that they don't think it's going to go through. They think there's too much negative out there against it. But then again, you know, who, who knows what happens, what happens with this stuff. But that, that's the only thing I've been in attendance with. And there was a group of people there from different areas. Is that was your understanding too, Vanessa?
Vanessa, watch, come on up.
Also, while we had this opportunity, I'd like to commend Vanessa on, she will be the, she is the first Emergency Management Director to be fully qualified, taken the, taken the PEM test and passed it with an 85%.
Congratulations.
Glad to know the results for that. I knew you were going in for it. You were really nervous, but.
I had shared an email with all of you, I want to say Thursday last week, following our meeting, or Tuesday last week, that was an article from the Crawford County Avalanche.
Got it. I printed it off.
So that had some details about the information gathering process and how they're not even close to through with it. That there's a lot of stuff that has to be done through Eagle. There's stuff that has to be done through DNR. So I would strongly encourage this be something that stay kind of on the back burner at least, so we can continue to gather information. Because while I have heard that it's, there's a negative perspective across the board, the state can ultimately do what the state wants to do. So, you know, I don't know that it's a, that we should entirely disregard it at this point. Maybe just keep our ears open.
I, I'd agree with you on that, Vanessa, because personally, I think it's a, it's a federal and a state deal, which, and I say state deal because it involves the DNR and Eagle and our National Guard. So, but you know, the federal government's got a hand in, the federal government's got a hand in this too, you know. Well, it's out of, it's out of the, in some ways, it's out of the realm of county government.
Absolutely.
But at the same time, we do have constituents that are, that are concerned about it and are kind of reacting negatively. But like I told the two gentlemen here that were last, last month, we haven't received anything. Of course, they said, well, you're not going to. Well, I don't know about that.
And Lovell's Township, it's my understanding, did enter a resolution against it. We have an extensive number of acres in our county alone that are potentially part of Area 1. There's lots of ORV trails, snowmobiling trails, that would all be impacted by this. So I think it's something that as a board, I would strongly encourage you to keep an eye on, but I don't know that at this point, there's enough information to.
I don't think there's, personally, I don't think there's enough information for us to act on putting a resolution together.
Yeah. There is, I mean, I can reach out to Camp Grayling, I can reach out to DNR, to Eagle, if any of you would like, to get more information from them. I have those contacts through Emergency Management. It just is a matter of how you guys would like to proceed.
I'd like to see them come to us before we send anything.
The only thing, yeah, I would think that they would come to us. I don't think we need to reach out to them right now. I mean, as much coverage this thing is getting, let's let it play out a little bit and see where it goes.
Absolutely.
But you know, you know, right now, all I've heard is negatives. Well, as, as with anything, there's got to be some positives too. So at this point, I have, you know, let's give, let's give the other side a chance. Like you say, I think it's in the really, really early stages also. I don't know if it's a wish list, it might be.
I, I haven't seen much from Camp Grayling regards to press releases. And I've been looking and I'll continue to look and forward those on to you guys as I find them.
So if you can keep, keep, keep looking and if you hear something, anybody here hears anything, let us know what's going on. At this point, you know, I haven't had any constituent talk to me about it. But that's not to say some of the rest of the guys haven't had some people, but let's see where it goes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
You know. Congratulations once again. We kind of brought this one on, Mr. Chair. You know, it is a, it is a federal and a state issue. I will look forward to the, what the federal government has to say in regard to future possibilities of war and conflict. Does this better prepares our men and women in uniform to fight and battle in the future? Certainly I could hear the value of the expansion.
Right. There's got to be some, there's got to be some value out there too.
There's got to be some, some value in this.
Right. I agree. And so, you know, anybody hears anything like Ken just brought up, he had heard something, share it with us. Because at this point, we've got nothing official from Camp Grayling or National Guard or anybody, like the two gentlemen said, well, they're not going to contact. Well, I don't know whether they will or they're not. So keep your eyes and ears open, okay? Okay, item number 11, motions and resolutions. Amy, did you get a drink of water?
I did.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion one, motion to approve an amendment to the originally approved Roscommon County United Way Utility Assistance American Rescue Plan Grant Program to include utility assistance for both Alice population homeowners and home renters.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Melbourne to authorize amendment to the original approved Roscommon County United Way Utility Assistance Rescue Program. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Moschekary.
Motion two, please.
Motion to authorize Chairman Robert E. Schneider to sign on behalf of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, the attached memorandum of understanding authorizing both the chairman and administrator controller to work with all Northern Michigan Community Mental Health County partners to address concerns regarding the delivery of community mental health with the goal of improving behavior health services.
Still move, Mr. Chair. I'll second that.
Motion is made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Russo to authorize Chairman Snyder to sign on behalf of Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, the attached memo of understanding. Copy of that is on here for everybody. I just, I just wanted to add, there is two issues going on there. This one just addresses the memo of understanding. All right. The hiring issue that they've got with the CEO is a separate program by another committee that the commissioners are not involved with. This is a, this needs to be passed by all six counties in order to move forward with it. So so everybody knows, yes, they're having some problems, but it's kind of their separate problems. Okay?
Right.
All right. Okay. Any other commissioner have anything to add to that? And there is another meeting coming up, the first part of September, after we take this back and then they'll bring back the next move after that. All right. Next step after that. All right. Further discussion. Okay, roll call.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Moschekary.
Okay, motion three, please.
Motion to approve the voluntary and early retirement incentive program as outlined below with the anticipated long-term 30-year savings of $1,470,752. First purpose and objectives. The purpose of this program is to offer those individuals who have been with the county long enough to retire or to be near retirement and our participants within the defined retire, defined benefit retirement program, an opportunity to retire early with incentive. The county will benefit through both short-term and long-term savings. Eligibility. Employees eligible to participate in the voluntary early retirement incentive program must meet the following criteria for eligibility. Full-time employee, currently enrolled in one of the following closed MERS-defined benefit plans. O1, General Union. O2, Sheriff. 1-1, Friend of Court. 2-0, Command. Fully vested, able to meet or utilize funding to meet MERS early retirement criteria of 50 with 25 years of service or 55 with 20 years of service. Voluntarily leave employment by March 31st, 2023. Signed agreement with the county of Roscommon. Retirement incentive window. Eligible individuals will have 60 days from the date of program approval to consider participation. Request for participation may be submitted beginning with the Board of Commissioners program approval, but will not be accepted past the 60-day window. Program offerings, $12,000 for employees who qualify for early retirement within the respective division or with, or employees currently meeting retirement criteria that have not yet retired. Considerations, the voluntary early retirement incentive program takes the following into consideration. Worker Adjustment and Retrain Notification Act, Age Discrimination in Employment Act, Older Workers Benefit Protection Act, all Roscommon County Union contracts.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler. Approved the voluntary early retirement incentive program as outlined below with anticipated long-term 30-year savings of $1,470,752. Any further discussion from any commissioners at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Moschekary.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Item number 12, Commissioners Committee Reports.
I can start that for you.
All right. Mr. Muckenthaler.
I had a recycling committee last week and I believe that was it.
Okay. Mr. Russo?
I had an agenda meeting. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Melbourne?
I had the LEPC meeting. LEPC meeting on the 16th. We have realized that it's, we're due for another full-scale exercise that we'll be planning for next year. I already mentioned that Vanessa passed the PEM exam. Front entrance glass security. I'm sorry, could you, you can do a better job on that than I can. I can't remember enough of it. I didn't take enough notes. I'll call on Vanessa again. Seems like it's going to be a pretty big expense. And, but it's going to be something we need to do.
In our quarterly building security meetings, it was presented that a more secure area, the main entrance is needed.
This one?
Yes.
Way over here.
The main court.
Court entrance. Okay, all right.
And so there's, was a recommendation of bulletproof glass. There's a bulletproof or bullet resistant film that's on the market that is actually a separate panel that goes over the window versus replacing the window entirely. There's a vendor out of Gaylord that provides that material. They are willing to come down and do a quote. For the middle of the run, it's about $250 a square foot or top of the line that would be resistant to a Or a top of the line that would be resistant to a AR fifteen bullet, it's three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So it would not be a small expense. Um, we'd probably be looking at probably about thirteen thousand with the number of windows that we have. And it would be specifically the security booth. Uh, so that is something that's been discussed. Uh, there's not been any formal, you know, plans for contract or anything, but it's just something that we're working on because it has been an identified need in Russ.
Well, that would be something that probably needs to be added to our restoration thing that we're looking for, that we need to look at upgrading security. And then I would think if we get further down the road, you're going to involve Bill from Maintenance, so.
Yeah, and he has
You know, okay, good.
And Lieutenant Bach and I have been in discussion as well, um, with plans and how we need to approve and approach things, so. There's been no other discussion of any other areas. I think the thought process was, is if someone comes in armed with a gun, that's where they're going to be first, most likely. Um, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure his office can probably speak more to the tactical reasons, but that was my understanding, and I just had told them that I would take that on.
When you, when you look back at this to see what we were and what we've come, what we've come to is just amazing sometimes.
Yes, sir.
You know, positively or men, or, or negatively, but, you know, I mean, I can remember, I can remember the discussion we had when we went to the buttoning down the entrances like we did. So, okay.
Three entrances at one time.
Yeah, I know it, so, four.
Yes, one, two, four, yeah.
If you need it for the security of the officers, in my opinion, buy it.
Let's hold on. They're in the process, all right?
Again, I'm, I, yeah, buy it.
Well, and Jody has been present for those too. So I know that she's been helpful in trying to figure out, you know, where we would be able to.
Glad you identified it. We need to put it on the restoration list with the reason why we need to have that restoration village.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board. This, it was brought up, that's something that needs to be done there. And the only other thing, a note from the Emergency Management Meeting was Teresa Bowles, the, uh, Health Department Representative that sits on our group, uh, she notified us that Crawford and Roscommon County have been deemed high COVID risk right now. The infection rate is high. And then, of course, Eric or, uh, mentioned about the two people in the, we had two people in the jail test positive for the COVID again. So it's just indicative that it's, it's out there. It's a variant. She told us that one of the Health Department employees got COVID for the second time, and they'd been sick for two weeks. It was worse than the first time in Michigan, so. It just, just FYI, it's out there, and it might not be as easy the second time around, so be careful. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Melbourne?
An MCA, we had that here last Monday. An MCAA in Traverse City and COA and Commissioner and Agent last Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I had a light, I had a light two weeks, and, um, I have, I've had family here for two weeks, and they're, they're, they're still here. So, uh, I did deliver the donuts to Mr. Melbourne's meeting there last Monday so that they'd have them. But after that, after that, I took a bunch of grandkids and kids on a canoeing trip, and that was an experience, so. Grandpa got tired. An agenda meeting on Thursday, um, and here we are today, so. Okay, we got a lot of things going. Item number thirteen, any further public comment from anyone out there, please? Nobody in front of me and nobody out in Zoom land? All right? Wait. Okay, all right.
Hello, my name is
Yes, sir.
My name's Chris Smith. I'm a, I've moved into Denton Township about three years ago and a General Motors retiree. Uh, I would like to speak about the security to the front end of the county building. Um, personally, I think that should be a fairly high priority. Uh, the people that work up there are great. I enjoy coming in and taking care of business. And I just hate to see their lives be at risk because somebody who's watched too many shoot them up games decides to come in and bring a gun in and have fish in a barrel.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, miss. Thank you for your comments. Any other, any other public comment out there in Zoom land or in front of me? Going once, going twice?
Still move, Mr. Chair.
Three times, okay. Item fourteen, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.